Ms. Cooper, you ready? You ready? All right. All right, here we go. All right, Mr. Novak, you have the floor, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the recess. Just wanted to get with the planner. Have proper copies made. If I can, right above the resolution for Gulfview Road abandonment, if you would, please then turn to ordinance comp plan amendment, parcel ID 00683-00R. That is the Lance petition. I'll read it by title. You've already had your first reading in November for the small scale. It's 4.049 acres. It's an ordinance amending comp plan of Gulf County. Buying through procedures required for small scale land use map amendment pursuant to authority under Florida statute 163 and Florida statute 125 specifically amending parcel ID 00683-000R, section seven township five, south range nine west, 127 Pet Patch Road, 4.049 acres Gulf County from ag two residential providing for an effective date. Again, sir, this is your second reading. You've already had your hearings on this. This would be the adoption of a small scale map amendment for this purpose, sir.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Any questions, commissioners, before I go to the public? All right, anyone in the public? It's open to the public. Questions or concerns in reference to the comp plan amendment for this parcel ID 00683? Any questions or concerns? All right. No questions or concerns? All right, back to you, Mr. Novak.
All right. Unless, Doug, do you have any other firm for the comment on the second reading? Do you have anything further you want to add to that?
No, sir.
If you would, commissioners, if you put it up for consideration in final adoption.
All right. Any questions, commissioners? If there being none, then entertain the motion that we adopt.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner Farrell. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this one? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, four and O.
Thank you, sir. The second, next one above that then would be the comp plan parcel ID 1037-02R. It would be the Lister, which was advertised today, would be the first. Again, you've had your hearings on it. This is the ratification through ordinance following up on those public hearings, both before the PDRB and the county commission. This would be an ordinance amending the comp plan of Gulf County, Florida, through procedures required, a small scale, again, land use map amendment pursuant to the authorities under 163 and Florida statute 125 specifically amending parcel ID 1037-02R, section 34, township five, south range nine west, intersection 381 and Van Drive, 5.76 acres Gulf County, Florida, and is up for your consideration today at this first hearing. And then the second would be then juror, February 28th, 9:00 meeting, sir.
All right. Thanks, Eric. Open to the public. Anyone in the public with any questions or concerns in reference to comp plan amendment for parcel ID 01037? Questions or concerns? Any questions or concerns? All right. There being none? All right. Mr. Novak?
Sir, if there is no further comment from the public, then you can move to the next. And we will have, we've already advertised that for a second hearing as well, sir.
Okay. All right. You have the floor.
And like I said, going up then, earlier you had your property rights element, which the state legislature has passed down to the counties and the cities. We prepared the ordinance for you today, and I'll read it by title. This is what needs the next step to be sent to the state. It's an ordinance amending the comp plan of Gulf County, Florida. Buying through procedures required for plan amendment pursuant to authority under Florida statute 163 and Florida statute 125 specifically so as to adopt an amendment to text adding chapter 13 property element rights per Florida statute 1363 subsection 3177 I six providing for an effective date. In conjunction with that, sir, we would then then transmit the one above it for the parcel ID 02734-012R, 02734-020R, 02734-021R, 0332400R, 03343, 3362-00R, 3362-050R, 03363-050R, and then lastly, 3368-050R. That would be also required by Florida statute to be sent up to the state within 10 days for their reading of that, and then send us further guidance and approval to move forward. The property rights element will be sent up in conjunction with it, sir.
All right. Anyone in, commissioners, any questions or concerns? All right, back to the public. Anyone in the public, questions or concerns? He said a lot of Rs there. That's all I know. All right. All right. All right, back to you, Mr. Novak.
Sir, and again, if you did, they're all listed as quasi judicial. So if you would entertain a motion to waive the quasi judicial with no comment, then we can go through it through the standard public hearing process.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right. Entertaining motion to waive quasi.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farrell. All right. Anyone in the public against waiving quasi judicial? All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, four and O. All right. I need to go back to the public, right?
Yes, sir, if you would, now that you waived that, please.
I'm sorry. All right. Open to the public. Anyone in the public, any questions or concerns in reference to these comp plan property rights? Any questions or concerns? All right. There being none, Mr. Novak?
Okay. Doug, do you have anything further? We'll send these up this week and obviously come back next month.
Yes, sir. These will, we were required on any large scale map amendment or text changes to submit them to the state within 10 days of your first reading. The state then has 30 days to respond back to us, at which time they give us 180 days to make their recommended corrections and have our second reading.
Thanks, sir. They'll come back before the commission again, after we have technical guidance from the state.
All right.
Okay.
So you don't need to vote?
Yes, you need to vote to send it up. Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Entertaining motion, send it up to the state.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, four and O.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Doug, for all of his hard work putting that together.
Yes, sir. All right. Moving on to bid openings. Ms. Carey and Ms. Rhodes, y'all ready?
Yes, sir. Bid number 2223-06 Salinas Park Pickleball Court, BCL Civil Contractors. Their base bid is $129,102. Their alternate bid is $30,566. Chief Construction, their base bid is $81,736. Their alternate is $26,378. And last one, Marshall Brothers Construction and Engineering, Inc. Their base bid is $207,100. Their alternate is $46,100. The next bid is 2223-07 for St. Joseph Bay Golf Club Irrigation Materials, FIS Outdoor. Their bid is $402,125.5. The next bid is 2223-08. That's for St. Joseph Bay Golf Club Irrigation Improvements. First bid is Pro Rain Irrigation Services, Inc. Their bid is $279,589. Westscapes LLC, their bid is $350,310. Last one is Williams Plumbing Services, Inc. Their bid is $413,500.
Chairman, we table all three of these if that's...
Table all three. Entertaining motion, table.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Farrell. Second by Commissioner McCrone. All right. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this? Table all three of these bids. Yes, sir. Come on up. Come on up and state your name, address for the record, please.
My name is Gene B. Hage. Address 5974 County Road 38. I just have two questions on the pickleball bids, not the price or anything like that, but I just want to make sure that these courts are adjacent to the courts that we now have. That's the first question.
Yes.
Okay. And then the second question is, will we entertain the eight-foot fencing around both courts?
Yes.
Because, okay. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Anyone else in the public, questions on this? Concerns on table? Any opposition to the motion, table? All right, motion passed, four and O, to table. All right. Moving on down to item eight, Calhoun County Building Department Interloco.
Commissioners, this interloco agreement was prepared several years ago. Back in the record, you had provided some interagency and intergovernmental assistance to Calhoun County. Inland building official there, they met last week after request to your administration and to you to continue that assistance until they're able to secure a certified and licensed building inspector for Calhoun. So I've been asked to prepare this. They met last week, I believe, in a public meeting. They voted unanimously to work with Gulf County and you to provide that interagency and intergovernmental assistance. And I'll hit the high points real quick, but most importantly, it's desirous of Calhoun County to enter into an agreement pursuant to Florida statute 163, which authorizes public agencies to enter into agreements to provide services and jointly exercise the power, privileges, or authority that they share in common, which might exercise separately. Gulf County agrees to provide the building inspection services administrative support and technical guidance to Calhoun County through its licensed building inspector under the direct supervisory and authority of the Gulf County administrator, and to provide these support services to the residents, visitors within Gulf County, or I'm sorry, Calhoun County. And it goes and lays out those terms. What we ask for through here is to provide a 90-day interim assistance with the ability, obviously, for the county Gulf to terminate that with a 30-day notice, and then can come back and report to you with Michael's recommendations at a later date for any further assistance. They voted it last week to accept this condition to attorney review by their attorney, Matthew Fugler.
So what we changed was the year to 90 days and the 60 days to 30 days. We're helping them. We're doing them a favor, but we're not taking them on to roost. So they need to work out their own deal. If we need to extend and they're moving forward, that's fine. But again, it takes Brad's time and my time and other folks' time, and we've agreed to help them, and I want to continue to help them, but they're going to have to make other plans, and they're just going to have to spend the money to get somebody. But you're good with those two changes.
Any questions, commissioner?
Glad you got it covered. I know we busy. All right.
All right. Entertaining motion that we move forward those changes with interloco.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farrell. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this interloco? All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passed, four and O.
And Red, did I understand, they said they'd give us $1,000 a month? Okay. So I'm good with that for 90 days, and we'll see where it goes.
All right. Moving on down to item nine, Ms. Fran Valenti, Cape San Blasts, seven requests.
Fran Valenti, he's 30A. Can I give you these?
Yes, ma'am.
Previous business is the seven issues that I've been asking you for, and I will be following up with the new representative. I believe his name is Simon. And I'd appreciate it if you would revisit these requests, pass them, so we can be done with these problems here. And the new subject that just came about is that if you, I'll give you a second to read this second letter.
Yes, ma'am. Will you?
I was just under the impression that I was grandfathered in, and there was no question, and that that was what this whole county is all about. And so evidently, I need proof that I'm, you know, I need permission to continue what I've been doing since 2010. I mean, yes, 2010. I've worked in the Capitol Office Park doing it. I've worked at Department of Motor Vehicles, Department of Agriculture, Department of Health, the DEP. I have done this work that I do, which is completely hardly any profit at all. And I was trained professionally by Apalachian Bee's Company Organization, and I graduated from their courses. I have been a Tupelo yard beekeeper myself in Lake Taquon State Forest. I've been trained by Famu Market Training Programs. We started up numerous markets all around Leon County. I've worked all along the coastline, Appalachia, the fancy neighborhood down there, seaside. And for some reason, I need additional proof that I'm able to continue my good work for the county that you include in your advertisements. I'm providing hospitality, and people come back to see me, and I provide all of these good things for your visitors and locals alike. And I'd like for your permission, please, to continue my work at the place I've been doing it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Fran a question?
Yes, sir.
Simon, who's Simon? Simon's last name? You said you're dealing with Representative Simon?
Is it Corey Simon?
Okay. So you've reached out to his office, and they've given you this request now back?
For the old issues.
Right. So your seven issues that you're referring to, you just gave them, are the issues that you brought before them?
They told me to come on the 31st.
Okay. So representative from his office has now told you to come back to the county commission to ask them to formally endorse your issues to go back and work for them?
No, it's a state meeting on the 31st.
Okay. And these seven issues are on the state agenda?
I'm assuming she don't, I'm assuming you're going to bring them up when Mr. Simon and Mr. Schoeff?
I'm hoping you'll work with me before that.
They're going, they're going to work with you before that?
I'm hoping that you will work with me before I have to start up with them. I've already contacted them.
Yeah. But I thought you had, yeah, I saw what I was going to ask. I thought you had already reached out to Mr. Schoeff's office.
Mr. Schoeff has brought me no, no resolve at all.
You will be here to see Mr. Schoeff and Mr. Simon on the...
Mr. Schoeff is out of the picture. He's...
But Mr. Schoeff and Mr. Simon will be here January 31st? 31st at 5:30? Yes.
I've given up on Schoeff.
Okay. So you're not dealing with Representative Schoeff anymore?
There's no response.
Okay. So you're talking to Senator Simon's office?
Hoping that you'll help me with these issues before I have to take up with the Simon office and attend the meeting on the 31st.
So you have talked to Senator Simon's office?
I have.
Okay. Okay.
And they're important, and I believe we're ignored for some prejudicial reason. I don't know why, but it's prejudice against our East 30 area. It's important, too. In fact, we just lost our third bear, the baby.
Uh-oh. Sorry.
But...
Ms. Valenti, and the reason I asked you that question, because you've come for several months and spoken to the commission, and have brought these seven issues before them, and they've actually responded to your request for them to participate. You indicated you're going to take it to the state officials.
I did.
And you obviously understand that they're not being responsive to you. The commissioners have given you their opinions in prior months on these issues, and they have the ability, as elected officials, to take them up. If they choose not to do that, that is their prerogative. They represent the constituents of Gulf County. But each one of your issues, each of the commissioners have commented on prior months. So you have the ability to come to that legislative meeting in this room and meet with your state officials, and you can bring that to their attention at that time as well. And you have the ability to do it here, and you have the ability to do it there. But they've addressed these issues at prior months. They have not taken any formal action. They have not voted three or more on any of these issues.
So what are you saying?
I'm not, other than you've, you've obviously sat in the back of the room. You've heard some of the discussion points earlier in this meeting. So some of the things that you were talking about on here have actually been touched on by the commission today, which is future growth and planning and smart growth of Gulf County. So there are actions being taken, but they're nothing specifically with regards to mowing in the right of ways, where you're, the Tupelo honey. But they've addressed these several times over.
The seven issues?
And I would encourage you to come and speak with your state officials.
He didn't return my call.
Ms. Fran, we, the millage rate, we've actually decreased the millage rate for, Michael, what, two years now?
Three.
Three, three years. So we've had a decrease in that for three years.
That was the eighth. I've already removed that from the list.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And we did a while ago, we abandoned the road in the Buffer Preserve. I mean, that kind of addresses the purchased conservation property, you know, near Ditches. We abandoned that road.
I'm not in that area.
Well, I mean, it is part of it, though. It might not be in your area, but, and I don't know of any mowing we do in...
Mowing?
Yeah. You said mowing on wetlands.
Oh.
Wetland cleaning and mowing.
This is behind the lots that are being bought, and they're cutting the state wetlands property between the water and their lots.
Who was cutting?
Property owners. The new owners that have purchased property. They're cutting the wetlands and mowing the marsh grasses that are not theirs. It's private property. I mean, it's state property. It's the wetlands. But they've trying to make their lot bigger and get more money, and...
In an effort to get to the point, I think, we spoke last week. I called, and I messaged you, and your voicemail was full, and then you called me back, and we talked, and you got a ticket for, after being warned about selling stuff on the right of ways and in the park. And that's an ordinance that's not directed towards you. It was a 1995 ordinance that says you cannot sell anything, fruit, watermelons, honey, canned goods, anything on county right of ways or in county parks without a permit. And we had that discussion, and you got a ticket, and you got to go see the judge. So I'm assuming that's what you're talking about with the honey part. You didn't ask that. But I can't give you a permit to violate that ordinance. Now, we have special permits for events, where we do event permits for so many days under special circumstances, when they rent the Beacon Hill Park, or they rent the Salinas Park. The horses are insured, and they have a special permit to do that deal. Again, that's something that the county commission. So if you want to request the county commission to do that, they have the ability to do that. I can't, as the administrator, I do not have the authority to break that ordinance. So if what you're talking about with the honey and the selling it all over Tallahassee and whatnot, if you want to ask them that question, you can. But I can't give you, you asked me to give you a waiver. I can't legally do that. Okay? So if that is your question, to get to the point, you can ask them.
I did move every time to where they told me to go. And the last time I did move...
But you do understand?
It was not on the right of way.
But it was in the park? Okay? So that's...
No, it was in the wetlands, and the officer wasn't sure where the park line was.
But we own it all, all the way to the water, and all the way to C30, and all the way on the other side of the road.
I didn't know until later.
So I'm not being argumentative. I'm just trying to, I'm trying to put this to a head. If you want to be able to do that, anywhere on county property, anywhere, right of way or park or whatever in the canal, they can give you, if they choose to, the ability to do that. I can't legally do that. So if you want to be able to continue to sell honey, I gave you 100 options, your own property, rent property, city park, when they have the farmer's market, or any of these festivals, but you said that that wasn't an option for you, they're the only ones that can give you a permit.
Well, I don't see what the problem is. I mean...
Mr. Chairman, if I could give Ms. Fran some more, do you have a county business license as well?
Oh, it's not required. I'm covered under, yes, I do.
Okay. So you're exempt from it under the ordinance?
They said it's not required now. I was inspected two years ago, and...
Okay. Because you need that as...
I'm covered under the cottage foods and the beekeeping rules.
I understand.
That the state adopted about 15 years ago.
I understand, and the county adopting ordinance for businesses operating in the county two years ago, which they adopted. So those are things, if you are exempt, you obviously need to provide that to the county as well. So just as you move forward, I know they didn't cite you for that, being in the right of way, but that would be something else that you want to be keep in mind as you operate this business somewhere else in the county.
It's not required.
Okay. If you're exempt, which I understand, you're being regulated by the state, then that's fine. The language isn't there.
Cottage food, beekeeping rules.
I understand that. So you're going to need those forms from the state as well.
To show you the forms?
You need them, just like anybody else that's exempt under the DBPR, which we put in the ordinance, that if you're exempt, then you do not need a county license to operate. Just, just want to give you food for thought.
I can fill up the rules and provide them to you? Is that what you want?
No, ma'am. I'm just referring you to the other county ordinance to make sure you're mindful of that as well as you move forward. Okay?
I didn't know about the county ordinance. Construction vehicles actually ran into me and crashed into my brand-new truck. So it was a big inconvenience, and I could have been injured. So I moved to the other area, which was safer. And then someone about three months ago just showed up and said, you know, you can't. And so I moved. I cooperated. And they showed up again and said, you can't. And so I moved again, and I cooperated. And then the third time, I wasn't even in the right of way, which they said I was, that was the problem. I was, it was way out of the way. I was in the trees, you just planted.
It's still county property, Ms....
Well, I didn't know, and the officer didn't know, and they actually had to research it on site.
Yeah. If we let you sell on the right of way, we would have hundreds of...
I wasn't on the right of way. It was in the trees.
Well, you have been, I guess, you know, I guess you were in the county park. If we let, we'd have hundreds of people trying to sell on the right of ways, county parks, and we'd have, you'd have food trailers all up and down the road, you know? I mean, it would just be a...
Well, there are only two of us, and one shows up in the spring with his crop and his harvest, and he leaves soon, and then I'm the rest of the time.
But you know what I'm saying? If we let you sell, then we got to let everybody else sell.
Well, this has been going on for decades, and for some reason, now someone complains?
No, the ordinance has been in place since 95. Michael, is that right?
Correct. Yes, sir.
I just assumed it was grandfathered.
I haven't, not ever heard that.
The county's making a lot of money off those tourism ads boasting about it, and I appreciate your support to be provided permission. I mean, I'm willing to pay for the paper process.
Like I said, Ms. Fran, we allowed you to do it. We'd have to allow everybody to sell everything. I mean, we would have, you'd have vendors all up and down the road, and I mean, that's never going to work, you know? But that's why now, if you, just like these food trailers out, they're on private property. Have you seen the food trailers, they're actually on private property? And we require that because we would have vendors everywhere, you know? It would just be a...
And just to say, again, you need to ask them if you want permission. Otherwise, you're going to get a ticket every time you get caught doing it, and you've been warned, you were warned several times before, and just like you said, and you moved. warned, you were warned several times before and just like you said, and you moved, but you didn't move to private property, you moved to other county property. So this is the deal. You're not the only one. Again, the biggest violator was at the Saint Joe Beach Beacon Hill Turnoff. And again, we have, for at least 20 years, we've run them off there. We had barbecue places, I mean, people renting everything. And again.
But the horses collect money there.
Excuse me?
The horses are collecting money on this county property. And they've been allowed?
But listen to me, the county commission allows it, it's by ordinance, they have insurance and they buy a permit. Again, if you want to operate on county property, ask the board to let you. And they say yea or nay, but I can't do it and you can't continue to do it or you're going to keep getting tickets. I mean, bottom line.
Do you need time to think about it?
No.
So why are the horses allowed and I'm not allowed? I'm asking permission now.
I move to deny permission to sell county property or right of ways.
I got, excuse me, got a motion by Commissioner Farrell to deny the request.
I think we've already got ordinance in place. Am I correct?
We do, but you have the authority to do temporary, what I do not have the authority. So just, I think this is the appropriate, I mean, she's making a request, y'all need to say yea or nay. Yes, sir.
All right.
Second to the now.
All right, got him. Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? All right, anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion to deny passes four and oh. That's your time, Mr. Valente.
Then you need to take it out of your brochures because it's not fair.
It's in the brochures?
I'm the backbone.
You saw it in a brochure?
I'm the one out there working hard for the county and you are using it in your brochures for advertisement at TDC and you're not supporting the beekeepers, the bees, or the mobile vendors that are trying to move the honey as it's produced and.
If we have an unlicensed photograph of Ms. Valente in our tourist guide, we'll instruct the TDC to remove that.
I'm really disappointed in this county. What happened?
Thank you, Ms. Valente. I will suggest that you come to the, come see Mr. Schoeffen.
You better believe it. I'll be there because I don't agree with anything really lately that's been going on. And whoever will call on that has serious issues. I mean.
Thank you, ma'am.
Couple of quick things. We'll send out a reminder on the legislative delegation meeting. Hopefully, everybody can come to that. Just to reiterate, I do understand Representative Schoeffe has refiled the TDC bill and it is similar to the original bill that we had requested last time, which would be good for the sheriff's office and good for public safety in general. And it took out the education element that caused a lot of consternation last time. Again, we got the thing tonight at the college, be wonderful to make an appearance there. The ARC, I think they've actually changed their name, it's now called ARC on the Gulf, is having a appreciation dinner and it's going to be Friday, the 27th at 5:30 at Centennial Building. If some of you can make that, that'd be wonderful as well. Anything else, Clay? Trying to think. We'll get those applications in today. We've been working with our lobbyists again. So committee meetings for the next couple of weeks and then, of course, legislative session starts first week of March. I believe that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
All right, 5:30, both of those meetings, right? At the college and at ARC?
Correct.
Correct. All right. All right, Ms. Rose, we got any public comment?
Yeah, we just have one. Patrick Foy, if I'm saying that correctly.
My name is Patrick Foy. I live at 136 South Oak Street on Indian Pass. Today, I'm representing South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department, Inc. That's a mouthful. You know us as the guys who do the butt roast. We are the 501(c)(3) that years ago, folks over in our area said, we want to support the fire department. So I brought you something today.
Okay.
All right. Thanks, sir. Today, I came to say thank you. We were put into place by community leaders, created a 501(c)(3) to help the fire department and that's what we continue to do. Today, you're going to receive a request or actually a presentation for a $20,000 Yamaha jet ski for the fire department. Well, the 501(c)(3) bought that. But what we want to thank you for is working with us, whether it's the Board of County Commissioners, whether it's Commissioner McCrone, whether it's Mr. Hammond, whether it's our chief. Y'all have worked for us and worked with us because when we do the butt roast, when we do the annual solicitation program, those dollars go to things that the fire department may not be able to do on their own. The chief has an opportunity to have 593, there's a photo of it there, which is a good rescue vehicle, $75,000. 501(c)(3) bought that. The Yamaha jet skis, the 501(c)(3) bought that. But at the same time, Station Two needed a new antenna after the hurricane, $10,000. The 501(c)(3) bought that. Tables and chairs, the 501(c)(3) bought that. When Station One was pretty well torn up and the insurance money got a little bit lean, we realized that we needed to put cabinets in to protect the equipment that we had. $35,000, the 501(c)(3) paid for that. I'm not here to boast what we've done, I'm here to say thank you for what you've done for us. We have a great working relationship with the county, with our chief, and we look forward to it in the future. We're not the fire department, we're not part of the fire department, we're a separate 501(c)(3). But what we want to do is we want to be partners. This gentleman here, Michael Hammond, when it got a little bit rough for water rescue, thank you, sir, you stood up and you supported us. That goes a long way for us. This guy here, he makes sure that EMS runs perfectly, but he allows us to work with them. You don't know how much, Jody, we appreciate that. So all the work that you do, we are there to support. That's all I'm here today to say thank you. I appreciate all your time, we look forward to it. I am looking for volunteers for the butt roast. You can work anytime you want, I have shifts already broken out for you. Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you, sir.
I'm glad I wasn't getting shot because I just got off the phone and when you said, you called me out, I'm like, what have I done now?
I wanted to wait till you got back. But you know what? You're a champ.
Thank you, sir.
We really appreciate everything that you do.
We got a lot of great folks at work.
You sure do. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Patrick, the nonprofit does a great job and has supported the fire department and the water rescue and we did, was it two years ago? Mike, remind me, we got a man certified, sent him off to California.
Yes, sir.
The county did.
And you paid for that.
And to really advance that water rescue to, and, but the nonprofit's done a great job. Y'all do the flag system, I believe.
Yes, sir.
And, but it has added tremendous support to the south end and we appreciate what y'all do. We appreciate the chief, we appreciate you, Patrick. And I look forward to y'all working together in the future and bigger and better thanks.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Chief, you want to say something? Chief?
Mike Barrett, South Gulf County Fire Chief. Again, I would also like to thank Patrick and the 501(c)(3). I'd like to thank all of y'all. This is a team effort. It's not just one person that does it. As chief, I feel like I'm almost like a glorified paper pusher, but that's okay. But again, the reason that we are succeeding, the reason that we are better trained, the reason that we are better equipped, it's due to everyone working together. It's not about me, it's not about just Matt, it's not about Patrick, it's not about any of my firefighters, it's about us as a team. And we will work together as we have in the past, we will continue to work together. I fully support the 501(c)(3). Do, I'm going to brag, we do a great job out there. Have great folks. So I want to thank Patrick and the 501(c)(3). I want to thank Matt, I want to thank you gentlemen, I want to thank you ladies and gentlemen. This, we succeed because we're a team and we will continue to be a team. And thank you for your support.
Yes, sir.
Chief? Hey, chief? Kind of like say something, I want to thank you. I've been reading some of those things you've been sending to little Bailey. A few girl, local girl's got cancer and they'll send her some stuff on the line. I thought it was, you see, I'll even do more than most of these people in this room even know. But that was spot on, very, very good. I appreciate you doing that.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir.
And, go ahead, go ahead.
I'll go at the end. If you had something following that, I apologize.
No, I was just going to say, I think they got some great news in reference to.
Yes, remission.
Yeah, and remission, so that was fantastic.
That was CFO Patronz's office trying to coordinate David's presentation for next week, so we're going to, we got to work on a time. But anyway, that was why I stepped out, I apologize.
It's good news.
All right. Any more? Anyone in the public want to come before the board? Come on, come on, Doc.
Pat Hardman, Coastal Community Association. Very quickly, thank you for everything you've done out there at Salinas Park. Appreciate it, looking forward. You know, we gave y'all, the Coastal Community Association gave y'all, and gave the county 95 hardwood trees out there and they've been planted, done, look real good. They survive a freeze, except somebody stole one of our red tree, red oaks, for why they had to have it. But we would like for y'all to write a grant if you can and get some more trees and shrubs to go in front of that, where you cut through the dune, in front of that dune to the east so that we're filling in that area as woodlands also. And there's a U.S. Fish and Wildlife Resilience Grant that will possibly give us the hardwoods and the, and some shrubs in there. We had gotten 500 pines from, Jason Schoeffe got us 500 pines and got for you. Unfortunately, nobody told us that they, that has become so salty that the pines couldn't live in there and we have to have a different type and extension services giving them a list of those in which we'll provide for you, if you will. So I hope y'all might consider that. CCA will again come forward and help you if you need some help with some other trees. Second question I have for you is if anybody's been out to, on the Cape, the erosion pass, sunrise, sunset, you've got homes in imminent danger of coming down. We'll be lucky if a number of them don't go down in the, in the winter storms here. Before Senator Ozley left office, she was working on with both DOE and DOT to get some emergency funding and emergency sand in there to protect those. But obviously, when you leave office, those things come to a halt. I would, I would request that the county maybe see if they can reinstate some of that. That, they said the DOT would get involved when it was within 30 foot of the road. Well, it's washed out the mailbox on two of those things. So it's in less than 30 foot of the road and it could come through there and take that road out. So if y'all could possibly see if we can maybe up the bar a little bit and get some emergency relief right down in that area and find out what's happening with the barrier reef. I know that one's a big one. Just, you've got to keep it, keep ticking it, though if you don't keep kicking it, it'll get stuck on somebody's back burner.
MRD responded to the second request for information from the state and the state reviewed it and came back with another request, so they're working on some more, more of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate everything you're doing.
And ultimately, Dr. Pat, on the erosion, we're well aware of it and, man, it's, you know, we applied for that money, was it last year, and we were turned down for the emergency money, but, I mean, the ultimate fix is the erosion control and, because we know we're never going to stop it or even slow it down until that.
Slow it down.
Yeah, that will slow it down, but where it's at now, it's like dumping money in a hole, you know? I mean, I hate to say that, but that's the truth. It, I think it's gotten worse since the hurricane, you know, but.
Oh, yeah.
But, but, you know, we will reach out and try to find anything we can that's available. I know Clay is all the time looking for, for, you know, that funding for that, but, but, you know, it, man, it, you know, it's like dumping sand out of a bucket and it washes right on, you know, right on down the beach and.
But what's your other option of not losing that?
And I agree and I feel for some of these people. I've talked to some homeowners that when they call, they say, you know, they bought the property site unseen. Well, I hate to tell you, you bought the fastest eroding beach in the state of Florida.
But realize, in South Florida, they, they put 10 times the amount of sand that we'd have year, month, yearly down there on the beaches.
I agree.
So it's.
And, you know, they have 10 times the population to, to beat that door down that we don't have and, you know, we do the best we can and, but we're, we're all the time looking, I assure you, so.
Well, we also applied for 4.8 million in sand lost from Hurricane Sally. FEMA shot down our first attempt, so we sent in our appeal letter to them this week. So I mean, we're still fighting that battle to try to get it.
Put it, we put it out, it goes away. And the barrier reef is the only thing that's going to give us some extra time. And, you know, we've been trying to do that for 10 years, so I know that and, but we, at least we got it into works now. So if you can get that out there, then we can get some extension on the, you're going to still lose sand, but maybe you won't, this is fastest I've ever seen it go.
It is. I think the erosion control is in play, Clay, it's not going away. We're just, we have to jump through all the hoops and, you know, but.
I know, it's, but if we don't do something, the road's going to go through there, not down that old stow.
That's right.
Thank y'all. Appreciate your consideration. And appreciate if you let me know so I can let people know what you might be doing, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, take this time, thank everyone for coming out to the board. And, oh, okay, come on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Pass Together's 118 Liberty Square, a couple reasons. One is Project Graduation. We, we are the president of the Project Graduation and we was thinking about trying to use the country club they did in the past, but I think they had to pay each day for, when they were using it, pay a fee. So I was coming to you guys because this, you know, these are the kids of our community and this is the only way that we have to try to, you know, make, make that work good and get it. Like I said, we have different entities from the county that have really been a blessing. The sheriff, you know, he do the car giveaway between both ends of the county. So that's a big part of the revenue that they have to try to make that night. So this was one that they said they have done in the past and went over real well, but the cost of the facility that they had to pay, but it took out a big chunk of the profit. So I said, well, I'll come and ask you guys to see if it was something you could do on that issue. Okay, so that was the first thing.
So my question is this, I thought they were doing it at the Honeyville and North End and they were doing it at Centennial Building here. Are they not doing that?
No, no, they changed. No, they don't do it.
So our only problem is this, we've leased that to a business now, so I mean, that is a business that we can't shut down. So, so, but, that's not saying that you can't do it, but I mean, we've got to, we've got to work with the business owner to work that out. So Clay can work with your group to try to make that happen. And again, but, but it's just not something that the county can say, yes, you can have it and it won't be any cost. I mean, my guess is that we can work it out if they'll buy the food or drinks or whatever from him. I bet that that would work. So if you'll get with Clay or whoever your group wants to get with Clay, he's the liaison and he can, he can work that out. We can figure out a way to make it work. If that's good with the board.
Because y'all got a hard day, it's, you're saying the night of graduation.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's, that's when, that's when they do that, is the night of graduation. But, but like I said, my, my, my reason for being here tonight, today, was just to ask and see what challenge that we need to go to to do that.
So if we can coordinate.
I'm not here saying you guys can work a miracle and, you know, y'all don't have that capability, so I have to talk to high power for that. But, but anyway, yeah, that's what I was doing, just bringing it out and putting it on the table so you guys can look at and see what you can do to help them, you know, because like I said, and I just kind of hesitated to put this figure out, but in the past, they've been over, somewhere over, already over $25,000, $30,000, what we had to receive. So, and we are probably halfway there, but it's a long way to go. So, and, and we are probably, probably halfway there, but it's a long way to go. So everywhere I could find a way to try to help cut costs, that's what I'm doing, okay? And, and this is the second part, I know I'm three minutes, so I want to try to get it all in quick. But I want to say thank you to Jeremy and the ones that came to the meeting that we had a couple weeks ago. It was probably two hundred citizens there that was, that was in concern about the No Petro situation. And, and let me say this, because I'm not here to type anybody when I come over. It's just the way I, I speak, what I feel. And I think that there are some things that we need to really look at, because I, it's, I'm concerned about the welfare of this. And I've been getting bits and pieces, people saying, but this place is gonna come out here and it's gonna probably be here for five years and then they're gonna remove it. Come on now, we know we ain't gonna spend that kind of millions and millions of dollars that didn't move it in five years. But the point of it is, like I said, so many avenues that I think, that I feel like we, somebody, one of the city, all the county, need to talk to No Petro and let them come here to tell the citizen what they recommend trying to do in that facility. Because right now, the way I look and see right here, nobody can give me no straight answers. The county, the city, nobody. One of the things that I'm concerned about, No Petro guy went around the back door to ask the FERC, to, to change the rules. So now, to me, that would be a red flag to me, to see why would they want to change the rule? Because the, that company regulate all the pipes and all the system that go that county, you know that. So, so, so that is a red flag to me to say, hey, something, if you trying to get, you trying to get around the back door something, then to me, something ain't right. So these are red flags.
Charlie, let me, let me say this, though, and I, you know, I, I do my research or try to, I, I'm not an expert, but far as the FERC, that actually went to court, that wasn't a back door, that was decided by a court of law, whether they had.
Well, the procedure that it went, and like I said.
Well, what I'm saying, though, the court decided if it had to go through FERC or not. It wasn't, it wasn't a back door.
But the court, well, I say this because the way I look at it, the way I look at it, if the court don't have all the, all the things to judge that, then yeah, I consider that back door. Because now, like I said, the, the, the only thing, the only thing that they gave them buffer was because of the plate that they have to move it from one point or another feet, amount of feet from that original place, they, they don't have to pipe it there. So they moved it, so that gave them a loophole to go around to say, hey, we ain't, we not doing it like all the other plants, so, because we got a buffer. So, and this is thing, like I said, and I'm not here to get in no discussion or arguments, but the thing about it, these are things that I think the citizen of Port St. Joe need to. And like I said, you guys don't have enough information to tell me, or what's going on, but it sound like this thing steady moving forward.
Charlie, let, let, let me say this, and, and I read all the time and I'm not, I'm not no expert, you're not either. I read the court, where it went to court, and, and they applied, they, they developed a, a container to transfer, transfer the product to the ship without a pipeline. That was my understanding.
All right.
You can go online, you can pull up the court decision, you can pull up, you know, this originally started in the Department of Energy.
Okay.
For, for it to move forward. And the court decided if it had to go through FERC, that is my understanding, that's what I've read. You know, I didn't get that from public citizen or nobody else, that came off, you know, from the court records.
Phil, let me ask you this. What do public citizen have to do with, this don't have nothing to do with public citizen.
But they're putting out, they're putting out.
I got my information, I didn't get it from public citizen.
No, what I'm saying is, they're putting out some information that is not exactly.
That, that, that conversation is for them.
Okay, what, what I'm saying is, is, is do your, do some research.
Oh, I done done it.
What I'm saying is, the court decided if it had to go to FERC, is what, all I'm saying, that's what I, that's what I see. I don't see any back door, you know what I'm saying?
Well, let me ask you this, and then, and then I'm gonna leave it alone, because I, I see this is gonna be an issue. But, but if, if it was, wasn't a problem, why would they develop a container to change the way that they get it from point A to point B, where the same way they have to do it all the other places they have to do it?
I, I, I can't answer that.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but don't bring up something that you can't answer.
No, I'm not, I'm not bringing up nothing, you brought up that, Charlie. You brought up about the, the transportation. What I'm saying is, you want to act like it's a conspiracy.
No, see, see.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you want to act, no, listen to me, Charlie.
No, I ain't saying with the.
First, the last time you came here, you, you, wait a minute, wait a minute, Charlie. You accused us of having contact with, with No Petro. I've never talked to anybody at No Petro, Charlie, you know that.
You need to go back and check your, check your minutes, because I didn't accuse you of talking to No Petro.
You, you asked the question, Charlie, you asked the question.
I asked a question, did you guys understand? And I think the reason I came the last time, we was talking about this signature. And, and I told you guys, I thought you got the, the cart before the horse, because you need to have all these information before you sign off on that, that supports something. Now, now, and, and like I said, that's what I see. So, but again, like I said, today, all I'm saying, I'm voicing my opinion, that you got people in this community, you had two hundred people and they had no idea what was going on. Now, should that be in a county that, 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 like I said, if a person too lazy to get up to come to a city commission kind of meet, or, 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 or kind of a city commission meeting, or school board meeting, and then they, in the dark, well, you kind of, in my point of view, you kind of deserve to. Because you have to get, get yourself involved and go to the meeting to find out information.
Charlie and I.
I don't do, I don't do that, that's why I say I cover, and I can only represent Charles Gathers, Pastor Gathers, the only one. And that's why I said, it's two hundred people that said, hey, we would like to have more information. And this is what I'm saying here, I'm not coming out here to argue with nobody, I'm not coming here to try to debate with nobody. I'm not trying to make myself look like I, no, because this is way above my head. The only thing I know is what I had to go and look, because, you know, for the, I, I, I really didn't even know nothing about this before I saw, asked. As a matter of fact, I think I called you and Commissioner Quinn first and asked about this. So I, 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 we did that and I said, well, hey, can you guys explain to me a little more about this? Well, you told me what you could, I start looking, I start seeing how the process take, how to, how to freeze this stuff and how they had to get it down to a certain, a minus, what, two sixty-five or whatever, before they could ever do. I looked and seen that, what happened once this start, they start doing, where this stuff burned off different type of gas that have to be stored, that have to be kept, and it's gonna have to be trucked or haul off at some point. So are we saying that we ready for this type, because these trucks and all these things coming in here, it's gonna, it's gonna tear up your road. It's gonna do a lot of things, but that ain't my point. My, my point is to see here, is to say to you guys, are we doing our due diligence?
Mr. Gathers, I, I was there at that meeting, I got up and talked at, at that meeting. And it is, just like, we're, we're sitting in front of, just like what I told you in that meeting, what the chairman said. We're not gonna do anything that's gonna affect our environment or the people of this county. It doesn't have any really thing to do with us, it's on city property anyway, if it's there. But, you know, for, we can talk about it all we want, I don't know anything about, they haven't come here. And if they don't, if we don't have the information, we're not gonna do it, if we got any say in it. So, and it's just like I said in that meeting, that when the, you couldn't read the rest of that letter, because it was blurred. If it hadn't been the NOVAC that wrote the letter, that told the guy what it said, it said, well, it was a letter of support to get the wheels going, we want, invite them to let us know what's going on and talk to us and gather information. That's all that letter of support was, but you couldn't read that on that. Now, you talk about back door, that is the back door.
And, and I understand my name was brought up a couple times at that, of course, I wouldn't have gone unless the chairman made me or the board made me. But, but at, at the end of the day, you know, they made a big deal the other day, the Biden administration actually told the truth and said, oh, we, we gonna do away with gas stoves. Well, they've already done it in New York City, they've got a date certain, and most of these liberal cities have already done it. I would guarantee you that three quarters of the houses in Port St. Joe, of the houses in Port St. Joe have natural gas. You know why? Because it's cheap and it's affordable and they can heat their homes. People can't afford electricity. And I guarantee you, these same liberal paid lobbyists from top, that has hijacked this process from Washington, D.C. Why they're in Port St. Joe, Gulf County, Florida, I have no idea, are anti-gas, they'll say they won't, don't want to kill anything, they're anti-gas, they don't give a damn about the public, they don't care how they heat their house, they don't care how they heat their water, they don't care how they cook their food. They'll cook their food on gas stoves, but the regular people like us can't. They're anti-fossil fuels and they don't give a damn about people in North Port St. Joe or Gulf County. They care about anti-fossil fuels and y'all been hijacked, y'all have been hijacked by this process.
First of all.
Y'all have been hijacked by this process.
I come to talk to you guys.
Okay.
I come to talk to you, Michael, that's your opinion.
It is, it is, and it's, and it's a sad.
How many people in the United States that have to have, uh, liquor gas?
Only the ones that don't have the pipeline running by.
So, 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 so the liquor gas ain't got nothing to do with Gulf County? They ain't gonna, Gulf County, that, that will not gonna benefit one bit.
It's a fossil fuel the same way.
See, we, we ain't talking, okay.
Hold on, real, let me add, let me add this before you go. You, you talking about, we was talking about like, there's still some questions in there. And, and I think, and it's a lot of questions in there for everybody, including this board, including the city. And like I said, that company, like I said, they hadn't reached out and said, hey, we gonna be here, we gonna come, we wanna hold public meetings. And, and like I say, it, it's, it's actually, like I said, it's, it's in the city ballpark. But I, I just can't see us standing behind it when we can't even get to, they not here to answer these questions.
That's my point exactly.
I mean, so, so.
That's my point exactly. But we, we doing a lot of things behind closed doors. And, and like I said, these people, these people, these people that keep talking about, we ain't doing nothing, it's some things been doing.
Charlie, 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 Charlie.
Mr. Chairman.
Charlie, Charlie.
Can I say one thing?
Charlie, me and you, listen, you called me on the phone. You called me on the phone, Charlie, I've known you all my life. Me and you's always been able to talk. We talked about that issue. And I told you, and I, I stand by it today, I've never talked to anybody from No Petro.
Okay, and I believe you.
And I, I'm not, I, I've talked to nobody from St. Joe Company.
I believe you.
But the letter was really about economic development, you know what I'm saying? That's all it was. It was, we, we have no authority to give them a development order in the city.
I understand that, totally, I don't have a problem with that.
And we're not, I can assure you, I have had no backdoor meetings or, or backroom meetings with anybody about L N G.
Let me clear this up, because I didn't say the county commission had, had no backdoor anything. I didn't do nothing about county commission, I didn't say y'all had backdoor meeting. I said that, that, that No Petro, to me, went in, in a sly way, because the way, because of, first of all, if I'm going to a city, I don't want to cut no corners. I want everything to be transparent, so I, I don't have nobody could say where they got special treatment. So this, this is why I said what I said about that. And let me say this, Charles Gathers is his own man, don't nobody make no decision for me. I, I, I'm, when I'm, I'm here, so y'all and this and all, don't go with me, okay? Because I, I, I'm my own man.
Mr. Chairman.
So this is the thing I'm saying, and trying to say, and I wonder, all I was asking you guys, all I was saying, let's try to figure out how we can get the citizen, and then you, Michael, you said something else and I had, I, I said, that, you said, well, we don't have to do it out on this plant. We can take it up the river. And I said, at that means, I said, I said, I don't care if you take it to wherever, if it's gonna cause harm to anybody, then that's what I said, that, that means, didn't I say that?
And, and I think, hold on, Michael, hold on, hold on. And, and real, I think we said that if it's gonna cause harm to anything, the county won't, won't support it.
You did say that, I agree with you.
And I said the same. And we agree with you on that, Charlie, and, and, but, but, back to the FERC question, and I, I just want to clear, but no, wait a minute. Because I want, I want you to understand, FERC regulates these plants.
They do.
Okay. And I told somebody the other day, the Eagle L N G plant in two thousand and nineteen was approved in Jacksonville. Okay. I, I'm just giving you an example, of two thousand and nineteen, okay? The Biden administration today, today, when he got in office, he canceled the Keystone Pipeline, which is a fossil fuel. If you took this plant today and applied to go to FERC with it, it would be denied. And the reason it would be denied, Charlie, is not, is not safety, or it's not environmental. That plant they put on the St. John's River in Jacksonville, i- is one of the most pristine areas in the country. It, it, it's a quarter of a mile from one, one of the most, a, a preserve that's unlike anywhere in the world. What I'm saying is, Charlie, the reason they, they denying these plants is because they're fossil fuels, straight out. It is, Charlie, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, and, and see, you got, y'all got based, based everything political, you made a statement today, you made a statement today that, uh, the, the records were filed in, 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 in the garage and, 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 and whether it filed in the penthouse or the garage, don't matter, because, to me, these kinds of conversations here cross party lines. So, so, so.
Mr. Gathers, Mr. Gathers, I have, I have one thing, because I, I did hear you talk the other day and I want to say to the chairman and the commission, and, and to your point about politics and party lines, a bigger issue for Gulf County, and I spoke about it at that meeting, is the commission wasn't there, Commissioner Farrell was there and he got up and spoke. Let's take all the politics out and the fossil fuels and all the other things. Jim McKnight's left, but he was here earlier, he's worked doggedly the last couple of years for economic development, okay? The letter that they wrote on September twenty-third to St. Joe Company was to say, listen, bring them, let's learn about it, okay? Since then, there's a narrative, or whatever, both sides of the issue. But what needs to happen in economic development, and I've been working for them for thirteen years, is someone comes to this community or anywhere in the country and says, one, do we have a place to put this type of business? Regardless of whatever it is, a fossil fuel, a No Petro, an airport, okay? And if they find a site selection, it's very important, because before you spend ten or fifteen million dollars on putting it in for permitting, you've got to make sure you have a location to do it, all right? This company, as I understand it, leased the property from St. Joe Company. First, first, most important thing, we got a place to put it, okay? The second one then, is to find out through FERC if they're exempt, that it would actually fit on this site. So site selection is the most important thing that you do in any business, regardless of whatever business. I'm not talking about fuels, let's talk about any business that comes to Gulf County. These companies spend a lot of money to figure out where they can go. Before they go out and, and engage communities and go through public hearings and do town halls and do workshops, they got to make sure that they can actually put an airport on the canal. The county secured nine hundred seventy-five thousand dollars to go out and do a feasibility study with St. Joe to find out if it'll work. They're gonna spend a million dollars to see if it works, okay? You have to find a spot first. The county's advertised for five hundred acres in Gulf County where they could put this, okay? We haven't gotten responses, but we're going to. So before you get into the politics and the fuel and all the other issues that are going on in the community the last four months, these companies spend a lot of money to come in and make sure they have a place. But before they spend five, ten, fifteen million dollars on the next step, they've got to go through federal regulatory authorities like FERC and say, we want to build a smaller plant, are we exempt? Okay, that was the petition, all right? And then they have to go to the place and say, do we have a site? Okay, now we've invested and we're leasing the land, so we've met the first two most important requirements. Then the next step in economic development, which Jim McKnight engages these people, all the time we talk about Fresenius. Fresenius is coming and did, coming and doing dialysis. Did they have a medical office building to put it in? Yeah, they secured one. Then they came to the county and said, can you help us with it? Let's have meetings, everyone's in favor of that. But before these companies come here and engage the community, they got to make sure they have a spot to do it, because it's, you're talking about the cart before the horse, were your words? That is definitely put in the cart before the horse, I'm not gonna spend ten million dollars to bring a business if I don't have a place to put it. And the letter they wrote specifically said, St. Joe Company, let's learn about the economic development, let's learn about the job growth, please engage whatever companies to come here and educate the public. That's the only thing the county commission has sent to this day, and everybody's talked about it, the city has this authority, the county doesn't. But the county wrote not to a fuel company, was to St. Joe, who they write to all the time and work with them on various projects, to bring people here to learn about it. That's the only engagement the county's had. But I think the cart before the horse is, these companies spend a lot of money to come, but you have to have the site first, Mr. Gathers. Yes, sir.
How many millions of dollars that they gonna save by not have to go through FERC to come here?
Yeah, but, but that's part of the dialogue, and, and that's what I spoke about. But that's, that needs any part of it, and that's why I spoke, that's why I was at the Centennial, and I think it was great that it was two hundred people there. I think it was great that they had an opportunity to present it. But that's why I said, I think the commission needs the benefit of all those sides. Before people start forming opinions, you have to have all the facts. I don't know anything about it, I'm not a biochemist, I'm not into fuels, I'm not a Ph.D. in any of this. I learned a lot, I think the other two hundred people did. But I think those are part of the dialogue that needs to happen over a two or three year period, where all of the elected officials become informed, but people have already formed opinions.
Well, they, they probably have, they probably have.
The last thing, and, because I'm biased, I am biased, I, I'm pro-development, I'm pro-economic development, we fight for it every day. I'm not gonna get a job at this company, I'm not gonna get a job at any of these companies that come by. I hopefully will retire before too long and I won't have to deal with this. But I've lived here all my life, I'm not gonna bring something that's bad for me or any, anybody, my friends or family or whatnot. But I'll tell you why they did it this way. And again, I've never met with this company either. We've worked with St. Joe Company for the last twenty years trying to get economic development. They only did it, and Commissioner Macron said why? They only went this way to get the exemption, because they would never get approved under this administration. It would never happen. So either we have something that will bring economic development potentially, if it's safe and whatnot, and bring jobs and bring tax base and whatever else and help the port, or we get nothing. And that's what we've had since the paper mill closed. No jobs, no economic development, no tax base, and we're same place. We're still waiting, the paper mill's been closed now for twenty-five years this year, twenty-five years. And we've been chasing every ox cart that come along to try to bring something.
And you did good, you've been good, doing good, because like I said, you want to look at something. Now, like I said, you keep talking about jobs, it, it, it's every, every place that came in the last two years can't keep enough people working.
But, but I tell you, when the paper mill come, they live in boxcars, I heard. All of our families come to St. Joe to work at the paper mill, they come.
I, I, I mean, you know, whether the boxcar ten, if you got the station, well, you just got to do what you got to do. But anyway, like I said, guys, I, I'm not here to, 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 to fuss or fight. I think you guys do a great job. And like I say, I, I told another guy, I went to the meetings, and every time I go, they take it personal when people don't agree with. You shouldn't, if you gonna be in these kind of position, you, you should have some tough skin.
That's right.
Because everybody gonna tell you you're doing a good job, but you got to know within yourself, when you put your head on the pillow, that you done your best out. And that's why I said, what you got, I ain't out here to try to, to call you out on your. And that's why I said, what you got, ain't I him to try to call you out on your job? It ain't my place to call you out. Now, it's my place to call Commissioner Quinn out.
And Charlie, that's why I say, we, we should educate ourselves. I'm talking about us, and, and I try to do that. I, I try to educate on, on the process of what type of plant that is. And, and, and like Commissioner Quinn, Chairman Quinn said, we're not for anything that's going to be detrimental to our community.
I, I hope so. I hope so. Because like I said, this, this is something going on, like I said, we just heard, I just heard a guy talking about the, uh, uh, fire departments. We don't have a fire department that would be able to, we, when we have, we have a gas, uh, gas station like with Ole Miss or Paye Play. We had to call in children to come in here and put it out, because we don't have that type of, of capability here. Now, now, granted, I have been reading and looking, there was a place not further down, down west, not too long ago, that I actually blew up. Liquor gas company. So, so these are things that we have to be observant of, to understand that this could happen.
Hey, Charlie, Charlie, and that has happened. I, I agree with you. But, but, hey, on the flip side, I can name you numerous houses up north that I've seen on the news in the last ten years that have blown completely apart from nat- uh, natural gas in a house.
I can too.
We, we got, but what, my point is, seventy-five percent of your houses in Gulf County has some form of natural gas.
I got it. I'm not fussing.
That's all I'm saying, Charlie. That's all I'm saying.
No, no, yeah, we know.
I think it's a great thing.
But, you know, you know.
Okay, I believe you.
I, I will, I will say this, and, uh, while real walking off, uh, leaving, uh, like I said, uh, there's a lot of questions out there that, heck, uh, uh, we still don't know. Like I said, the company hasn't, uh, they hadn't, they hadn't reached out, they hadn't, and last I heard, they hadn't reached out to the city of Port St. Joe.
They had a meeting somewhere, so, see, that's why I said, bad information.
We, we, we have never, yeah. We have never met.
Well, no.
And that's why I said, bad to be saying.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about, I'm talking about ever since that, that, when that meeting was in Oc- October, I'm talking about since then, that, that company has been dormant. I hadn't heard anything else from them. They hadn't contacted the county, hadn't contacted the, the city. And, 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 and to me, if, if they're not trying to, uh, get up with the city and, and quell some of these rumors and get information out there, I mean, it's, it's, I just don't see it happening, because they're not putting foot, uh, uh, foot forward. Uh, so until they come out and put a foot forward, then I just don't see, I don't see nothing. I mean, it's just, it's just talk. Come on up, real.
Yeah, Chester Davis, uh, two eighty-two Avenue D. I'm also a pastor over in Northside. I heard the statement says that we've been sold a bill of no goods. One of the problems that this right here brings to the front is the fact that Northport St. Joe has lived in an area where we've had industry that has caused a lot of issues for welfare, sickness, and whatever in our community. So all of a sudden, we get news that something is coming into the community that we know nothing about. It isn't an attack on our politician, but it is a, a, an attack on what we need to know, impact studies. And when those things just hit that public like that, you know, who are we supposed to, what are we supposed to say, or who are we supposed to come to for information? Now, the fellow that came down, uh, and gave that information, he contacted us with the news that this right here, plant, not natural gas. Was nothing against natural gas, because I use natural gas and I love it. But it said a plant that would do something with the natural gas to transport it somewhere else. So it wasn't a takeaway from the natural gas that we're using in our home, but it was a plant that would bring on industry in here that can compose some danger. So that's what our issue was about. And it was being placed in a brownfield area. We have, my, my area that I live in has been brownfield, uh, to the point where it is polluted and it's sinking with houses, so forth and so on, that St. Joe Company put soil on that ground, and it's still polluting there, and it's still sinking. So we're concerned. And so when it's time for us to address that, who do we address it to? Who do we ask? So we come to our county commissioners, our city commissioners, and one thing you clarified to me today, and I'm so glad I heard it here, was that anything that comes into the county, especially within the city limits, the city need to do their due diligence. So we're going to take it up with the city. But we do appreciate, you know, all you guys have said and done, but we still have questions. We still need to know, especially when an outside entity wants to come into our county, our city, or in our area, and we don't know anything about it. That's big.
Just to echo on what you said, Pastor Davis, we still got questions, and we, I, I still got a lot of questions also in reference to, you know, what, what's going on? You know, where, where, where is the company, you know? We got a lot of answers, I mean, questions that need to be answered. And so, I mean, I, I think we all in the, in the same boat, where, where are you, you know?
And, and, and let, and see, the question is this, it's not against anyone here, but Port St. Joe name on that facility is in Washington DC. And that's a fact. So, you know, if it's already in Washington DC, but we don't know anything about it, where it's supposed to be here? And so I think it just raised the question as to what do we do? How do we respond to things like that, especially when we have no idea what it might bring, what's the impact study? And so, so we question that. And like I say, I pray that we never think it's individual attack, but we still need to know, especially when we living in an area that has been impacted with so much, uh, bad soil and so forth and so on. So that, that's, that's my take.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
And, and let me say this, Mr. Chairman, and, and I think Mr. Novak answered that question about, the St. Joe Company entered into an agreement with the company, No Petro, far as to lease the land. And, and at that point, they don't have to, we, we have received nothing, or I don't think the city has either, far as any kind of orders or, Jim, you want to answer that?
There's no activity. And, and to Chester's point, the due diligence is, is a great way to characterize it, because this whole community is doing the due diligence on a new industry or a new job growth. But we can't expect the private industry and the private sector not to do their due diligence on our community. I mean, and that's essentially what every company does, whether it's, um, a mom and pop shop. Can they go downtown on Reed Avenue and open up tomorrow? Well, they need to figure out if they can put their business there. And it's the same thing, just on a larger scale. There's health impacts to everything. They were talking about homes with natural gas. But they're doing their due diligence. That's why we're on a list up in DC with two hundred plus applications from around the country, because they're checking us out, just as we check these companies out. And, and, and if they, if you, there's nothing that we control about who leases private lands, Gulf County and the city, nobody has control over that. It's what you do with, with a development order, is when it goes to the next level, right? So that's where the city of Port St. Joe would come in.
And let me say this, I don't know what the city's received, Chester, so let me tell you, you know, I, I.
But they, they had the same attitude as if we were attacking them. But like I said, when these things pop up, what do we do? We, we actually have to ask questions. We have to say what's, what's happening. We, right now, was in the process of redeveloping Northport St. Joe. Uh, we started seven years ago with the question mark, how can we redevelop Northport St. Joe? It had thirty-nine businesses one time on Martin Luther King. We don't have none of that no more. So when we start that process, and all of a sudden, something else pop up, that what, prevent us from, what, redevelopment? Right now, we, we got some things that we're trying to do in Northport St. Joe that's already reached Washington DC, and all of a sudden, this right here pop up. So sure, we had questions. And so with that, with that done, you know, it's not an attack, it's just that we're looking for some, what, resolutions also.
And, and we're certainly not attacking, especially the citizens. I think there are two things that, that, that we need to have a good discussion about, no matter what. And I'm for the redevelopment of Port St., Northport St. Joe, and for businesses that thrived when the paper mill was there. But guys, ninety-nine percent of any future economic activity of any big scale is going to go on that mill site. That's where the port is. So if we have a port, so I, I don't want us to be in an antagonistic position, uh, with the redevelopment of Northport St. Joe, to say that any port activity, or any business on that site is going to foul you up, because I can tell you, the lie is, and again, the most expensive property in the state of Florida is Fisher Island in the mouth of the port of Miami, and it is a dirty port. So that, that, we can coexist, the, the Northport St. Joe redevelopment, the city of Port St. Joe, the health of the Gulf County, and business on that port site can coexist. And I think where this really got off on the bad track with, with, certainly with my feelings, is when that group from Washington DC filed a lawsuit before, again, before they've even turned in a development order. To my knowledge, they haven't turned in anything to the city of Port St. Joe, from what I'm being told. But again, they were working with a private company to bring a business to this area that we have actually asked for. I mean, we've been working on LNG for four, five years behind the scenes, trying to get a big company, something like they brought to Jacksonville, for jobs, for economic impact, for money, for whatever, for tax base. They sued before they even turned in a development order. And that's, I think that's what gave a bad taste in some of our mouths.
The actual suit was to stop it simply because it went underneath the radar of FERC. And that was, and that was the manner of cause that we received. Why would you go underneath FERC based upon the rules and regulations that are set? So they're not, will not be governed by FERC. And that's what made the lawsuit what it was. But like I say, now, whatever comes or come may, I still think when it comes down to it, we just need to know. And, and, and like I say, St. Joe Company is, is the land owner down there, and they probably can do anything they want to do. But I still think even St. Joe Company has a responsibility to the citizens of Gulf County.
That's right.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Come on up. State your name, address for the record.
Jeff Harvey, nineteen eighty-eight, Juniper Avenue. Does ten years here qualify me as not a blow-in? I don't know. I didn't just get here. Child's in school, wife and I work here, call it home, love it here. I will just say y'all done a great job. Counting, every, really, I mean, we've got record tax receipts right now. Let's not, let's not forget, we, we are the goose that laid the golden egg in this county, right? Whether I came here ten years ago, or you lived here your whole life and don't plan on going anywhere, it's a great place to be. I'm getting chills, I mean, got goosebumps right now. Goose that laid the golden egg, though, I've been called a socialist. In the last month, I've been called a socialist. Because I would dare say, we, we don't want to kill the goose that laid the golden egg. I work with a company, in addition to working for a company here in town, I work with a company that's about to build its hundredth plant, between ten and twenty million dollars in the forest product industry. Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm the last guy that's against development and against growth. But we got to look and value what we have. We should be proud of it. And I think a lot of the concern with the reasonable-minded folks that I've talked to i- is that they see private folks from around the world putting together twelve million dollars to buy Lake Wimaco, tatted on to the Arwia area, so it'll always be as beautiful as it is? That's a, that's a ratification of the golden egg we got here. Twenty million dollars coming, I don't know if it's Turkey Federation or Ducks Unlimited, to the north end of the county, out there by Howard Creek, to rework all that rice area and empowerment in the next few years? That's private dollars, a lot of it. Working with federal and, and, and local contractors, the amount of dirt that's going to get hauled in and out of there, the amount of jobs that that's going to drive, it's a beautiful thing. So I'm all for development. I'm not a socialist, certainly not. I'm, I'm, I'm not a lot of things I've been called. But, but I, but this is a special place, and it requires a special assessment, I believe. I've got to move faster. I've been accused by my, some folks in my family of being a weapons-grade numbers guy. Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at this as numbers. What, probably half our, is it fair, fair to say half our tax base to the south end of the county at this point, with all the tax dollars and non-home set of houses? I mean, twenty-five, thirty million dollars conservatively, right? You take swath off ten percent of that, because something bad happens. I'm not saying it will, but if it does, that more than eats any added value of an industry that may cause a problem. So pragmatism, valuing that golden egg. And so the folks that I've talked to, the disappointment concern has been, I say them out of time, is that we feel like this is moving before the numbers. And so I would ju- I would just ask y'all to please be cautious, because a lot of the things that y'all do, while you may not control it, and we're going to be talking to the city as well. But a lot of things that y'all do, the ratification, the encouragement of an industry, that's the sort of thing that, and it's not a court case, by the way, it's a commission. FERC is a commission. It's now in court, because the, the, the things y'all might do would cause, I apologize, I'll, I'll stop myself. But, all right, some of the things y'all might do, that would lean on that commission to maybe just a little bit, just a click. More likely than not, one way or another. And so I would just, I would, again, I'm not angry at y'all, and I apologize for, I guess, to anyone that I've offended politically or otherwise. And I usually keep my, I'm a turtle, I keep under my shell, don't bother anybody. But I, you know, I've opened my mouth a little bit around town, I got some folks pretty hot under the collar at me. I, I just want to make sure that we're, that we remember that those of us that live here and have been here, I don't know what the amount of time is for, for you're vested, but that really value it, we got to protect it, because we are the ones that are going to protect this, the, this, the, we're the goose, the golden egg, or both. We're the ones that are going to protect it. And y'all are elected representatives, and we, we call upon you to do that for us. So just please understand that, that, I think we all benefit if we turn down the demagoguery and focus on the numbers and, and, and our common interest, and, and, and remind ourselves, we've done a great job. Gosh, we're not an area that doesn't have a coastline and a bay and a beautiful river, and how many hundreds of thousands of acres, millions in this county, that are protected, and every, most everybody agrees, that's a good thing, because of how special it is. So I appreciate y'all, appreciate your time. I, I, I wanted to get that out, because I, I'll promise my family that I would, that I'd clear, that I'd clear the air, that I'm not wanting to attack anybody. I appreciate y'all.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone else? All right, take this time and opportunity, thank everyone for coming out to the board of county commissioners, we entertain a motion to adjourn. Most by Commissioner Farrell, second by Commissioner Macron, in the opposition, motion passed, four and oh.